What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be doing big blind defense against the button. Forty big blocks. Let's go.
This looks like an attractive raise.
This is.
Yeah, some frequency, the, the, the GTO score will be called, but it will raise some.
Sure.
Yeah, two checks for the call, one check for the raise.
Look at this.
I'm just saying if for your school optimal score it's all but it raises.
Almost all the line here. Look at this.
I'm just telling you how GTA wizard scores. That's why I only reason why I mentioned that.
If you three bet, you gotta bet this flop, I think.
Three bets he bet.
Yeah.
Uh, what size?
Five.
I would lean small personally with thirty effective.
As long as you bet.
Mm hmm. Um, I'm torn. We have a pair now, so I kinda wanna check.
Uh, I think maybe even rip cuz we're got SPR one. We got a pair uh with it over at a redraw.
For me. Whenever they flush complete in a three bed but and were they aggressor, it's not good for us. We have a six, we have a hand that is gonna struggle against a raise on the turn.
Maybe we go super small.
If you go super small and get ripped on, what do you do?
Call like maybe twenty-five percent, you call it off, right? Like can't fold.
I don't know, man.
Money when you head towards that out.
I think you are on directly with an SPR one at this point. You got a good hand. You don't wanna get bust off with it either.
It feels like you're uh, it feels like you're showing up with thirty percent or worse.
You can bet ten percent if you want. See, it's betting so small that it's gonna probably call up the race, I guess.
I don't know, man. You should explore that node. I think it's interesting.
I don't think you think I'm never betting her.
I only go because I have the spade.
I like to get. I'm uh, I guess what I'm saying is if you bet small and you get ripped on, I don't know the answer is uh, but like my instincts would say fold. That's the only reason I would suggest looking at it.
We get rid of you call. Cuz it's a three bed, but we have a parent where I have extra equity. On the turn.
Yeah, so do this like little silly micro size.
Seven. I wanna go, I wanna go three.
I wanted to go top percent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I go, you gotta go the really small size.
Then he goes in. Think we call.
Yeah, you just call. You're actually making pretty good EV. Pretty good. It's not even close.
Yeah, cuz you might be ahead, but then you have what fourteen outs to improve.
I'm torn between. I was thinking maybe you kinda rip it in his face sometimes, but you got a pair, so I guess you're just trying to get it to showdown.
Pretty bad turn.
Now we have a really fun node to play. Check.
Or block that.
No, it's not the death on the turn. We can't block that.
Yeah, yeah.
Let him barrel. Let's go.
It's a three bet pot. I just don't see you. Alright, well, I don't know. You're probably supposed to bluff catch this at some frequency.
Yep.
You hold the king of states blocked value.
Yeah.
Good.
We're good. Oh my god.
Wow, we got some us.
What is?
Yes. How does he make it to the river with that hand?
Between that pretty bad he's. Two, two overs and a flush draw.
Yeah, I guess we call this.
Oh, really?
Yeah, let me look.
I don't have this one in my arsenal.
Yeah, it's their low frequencies all up and around that area. Jack eight, K eight, or ten eight. Check seven and stuff like that, I think.
Call.
In fact, I used jacket yesterday.
Uh, we don't need to. It's a king high board. We can overfold a little bit.
Probably. It's just a really small bet and we wrap around the seven.
And then we have a spade though.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Have a spade slightly.
And we, and we have a backdoor straight door.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean by wrapping around the seven.
You're.
Raising a little bit. Yeah.
It's four. Because it's because it's a do- a good double barrel candidate cuz you're gonna pick up equity a lot of times.
Yep, I think you're right, Pete. It actually raises quite a bit there.
Yeah.
You'll go for a raise.
As a raise when you think about it. So you pick up a state, you bet, you pick up a nine, you bet, you pick up an eight or a ten, you check.
Six bet.
Yeah. Spade bet.
So.
I don't think we get to.
I don't, I don't think we need.
We might, but I don't, I don't find it.
You check called.
I think this.
Check again. Uh, just check it, man.
Yeah, check call. I mean, he's not gonna value bet at nine, right?
At one, no.
That's one.
Blocking bet. He checked through. You block that.
Yeah, but I've tried, I always try to think what worst calls. So like, I don't mind bluff catch you there.
They're gonna be similar EV.
Oh. Check raise. Barrow turn now. What's?
Alright, so two tone, a lot of, it's a really unstable board here.
Yeah.
I think you probably fifty-five.
I go fifty-five.
Yeah.
That's my default size on a double flush combo board. For some reason, that's just by default.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if we go a little bit bigger here. We really.
We check raise on the flop, so we just should, you should play back with a lot of kings right on the flop against our check raise.
Right, but.
All double games to be clicking, so now.
On double suited boards, you're supposed to lower your bet a bit.
That's not necessarily true.
What?
Oh, that's. Alright. Where do you? I, I'm getting, I got that from Matt Affleck lesson I watched two weeks ago.
Oh, nice.
I mean, I see a lot. That's why my default fifty-five.
There, there are situations. There are situations. It polar, a better explanation would be it polarizes. You have some very big bets here and then you have some small bets.
It's in my mind when the heart comes like this, we just polar even more. Where you say Joey that it's, it's lowering our frequencies.
If you had a flush draw here to go with this, I think you would have some like absolutely massive sizings with a hand like this.
What?
The SPR is the thing too. Like, well, if we go seven, if we go almost eight here, the SPR is less than one on the river. So like, your bluffs are gonna struggle. Uh, if you make it much smaller.
I mean.
You make the SPR much lower, you really can't bluff.
I, I don't think you ever bet seventeen. It's either fifty-five or eighty-three.
Ten eighth of hearts, I would always go fuck.
You should be going quite large with ten eight of hearts. You know, like, I feel like jamming this turn is kind of silly, but I'm kinda curious if the solver actually does ever jam parts of its range.
So my guess, here's my reasoning here. He would play back his kings against our check raise on the flop. So he probably more has like a hand like that wanna continue like a spade.
Oh.
I guess some stuff.
A weak, a weak king.
A weak king, spade stuff. So I got that range, you can put a lot of pressure.
What do you think he does with a king? Uh, king X of spades or like ace, king spades, king queen spades, king jack spades? I think they all.
On the flop. I would.
You know that, I think they all raise on the flop.
Yeah. But maybe.
I mean, when you are, I was gonna say, when you're in position, like, your whole range doesn't always raise for the top of its value. He should still be relatively uncapped here with a few exceptions.
Yeah, he has a good king with a good redrawals. I don't think he needs to raise.
There's like a million better hands that is gonna fold for four eleven.
Well, that's true, Louis. I agree. Like, um, I'm advocating for a larger size here, I would say.
Fifty-five percent.
With seven. Alright.
I mean, I, I was right in the start and then I let you guys talk me up.
I stuck to my guns, Joey.
Again, what you learn from that?
Huh?
Tell us what you learned from that. Maybe it applies here.
He was saying we don't bet large.
He just, basically the way I look at it is. When it double flush board, you figure out what, like, I would have bet eighty-three if it was like nine of clubs. But the double flush, I bring it down one step. So I go from like. Eighty-three percent to like sixty percent.
There is some, so it goes, if the double flush draw isn't there, it does prefer some of the larger sizing a bit.
So yeah, I've been using the fifty-five as a default there, but that had a lot to do with the SPR as well. If you make this eighty, you might find your larger bets.
So when a double flush drug comes in like this, we don't necessarily size up. It actually sizes us down.
Look at it in a deeper, deeper.
Yeah, well, I, I think, yeah, what Ken's saying is I think some of that is a function of the uh stack, the pot ratio. Yeah, the stacked up here as well. If you played with that one way or the other, I think you might get some larger bets.
I see the larger bets are probably for deeper stacks.
Look at this at eighty.
Maybe even like shallower stacks, like you may just get jams.
Because deeper or backdoor gains equi- gains kind of value, right? Whereas shorter.
I think both is kinda the thing. Like, if you have an SPR, if you have like twenty-five big blinds or let's say thirty big blinds. Like, uh, the bet sizings get kinda goofy. I mean, maybe it goes just smaller and smaller. I don't know.
Just look, it's so much easier.
I agree. So it actually just pushes, it just pushes them smaller if you go here. There is some jamming, like some of it gets kinda big, but not really.
Look at eighty now.
I would guess Ken's right about eighty. You're just gonna have some, you wanna lower the SPR.
Is it not one of the sort of rules if you're putting in a third of your stack, you're as well going all in?
Uh, no, that's, that's something that Jonathan used to teach before he started studying GTO. I haven't heard it. I haven't heard him say that since he started studying GTO.
So here you go.
Okay, so it's a thing, a deep stack.
Yeah.
Alright, forty-ish when it comes.
Well.
Thought you got four.
I mean. I think, I don't know. This is, this is a uh crap situation all the way around, right?
It's not fold. It's not fold.
Well, I, I run through the math real quick. Okay, so it's gonna cost you ten big lines to hit your draw.
Ten to win fifty. I think that's.
Pretty, pretty close, right, Joey? Pretty.
We're gonna, we're gonna win probably sixteen percent of the time.
And then when we hit, and then when we hit, we'll get the rest of the stack.
I'm not counting on my ten or eight being good very often, so I think we need, uh, I think we need.
I know, we're just drawing to the straight.
I think we're short on equity.
Yeah, we're short by four percent and.
We're short by four percent, but we'll make that up on the river bet when we hit.
But Joey, sometimes even our straight outs are not good because of the flush. So it could even be less than sixteen percent.
And a jack we could lose to a bigger straight.
So I guess we have the silver solution.
And then you never know. Sometimes ten might um show down.
Be good, right? That then might be good, so it might.
You have, you have some thirty outs, but if he's bluffing, hitting a ten, can win the hand.
Let's see what the machine says. So let's call.
Yeah, it actually has enough equity to jam point four percent of the time. It's just a miserable spot.
He blocked bluffs too, which is crazy.
Louis, you're.
I wasn't, I wasn't convinced. You guys almost talked me out of it, but I thought the math worked out.
Yeah. You're such, Louis, you're such a net.
I know, right? But I feel like I have done high and my opponents are never trying to get me here. And there is the turn.
Yeah, dude, this is miserable. I.
Well, now we got an eight.
Now you gotta, you gotta check call, I guess.
You gotta go broke.
All we have is spade.
I don't think you can fold now.
You're blocking straights. You got a pair. I don't know, dude.
My god.
You probably gotta call this.
Eight? You guys are insane?
That's why I fold turn.
Oh, with this paid, I wanna like with this price, like it's tough to say, yeah, we gotta fold, right?
You block.
Are you right? Are you right thirty percent of the time?
I, uh, I mean.
No.
It kinda sucks. Okay, so it tends blocking a lot of the combos we want him to have. A spades blocking some combos we want him to have.
I'm out of here.
You don't have a, you don't have a heart, you have to call.
You only have to be right about eighteen percent of the time with your products. You gotta call sixteen, the pot's gonna be a hundred after the call.
And this guy has enough luck for us to, to call here, right? With the ten and blah, blah, blah.
So what do you think about this?
Always fully.
Do we, is the ten good or bad? Because we're blocking the nuts right now, but it was like. An obscure line to get to the nuts, right? Like, I don't know how many jack tens he's gonna have here that.
I know.
Raise you on, raise you on the turn.
I'm in it. I'm, I'm out of here.
You, you are. Don't Louis, don't.
Now, look at it. Look at the EV loss. So it is like pretty razor thin, but. Uh, I don't think you need to fight for these.
Yeah.
Change the move and see what he has. Let's rabbit.
Ken's gotta, Ken's gotta know what the computer got him with.
Yeah, well, I called. I wanna see if I'm a fish and I am.
Just a set of minds, so you can.
His raise makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Alright, that's it. Oh, that's not as easy anymore.
It's alright. So it's a, it's a king. You got blockers to the flush. I think he bet small still a lot.
Bet small, yeah.
All over.
Oh, that's big. Fifty percent. I mean, that's kinda big. Free bet pot.
Uh, static board didn't really change much. Blocking both flushes. I wonder if we ever continue barreling. I think we got a pair of queens. We'll probably just check.
Yeah, I like check.
Nope, it wants to bet. Um, it'd be interesting to look at the combos. If you have the one unblocking the flushes, if it puts the brakes on or not.
I don't think.
The double blockers barrel, huh?
I think it's just second bear. We're going for value. No matter what.
So you're right. Yep, that's the overriding component. Actually, double blockers is bad comparatively. Like, look at the one without the blockers.
It size up without.
Yeah, it goes kinda bananas. You just jam without.
Yeah, in, in a three bet pot where you have the best kings and he has the worst kings, a king is a really good card for you here. And so this is just a hand you get to put a lot of pressure on him with you, so. It wanted to bet big on the flop, so when you miss, when you take the low bet on the flop, it, it really reminds you that you need to bet big on the turn. When you bet small on the turn, it reminds you, you need to jam the river.
But I don't have this triple and off in me with a under pair when I get called twice. I just don't, I can't do it.
Oh, look, king jack. Never would've guessed.
Never would've guessed.
Like here now, he has king jack can, but he, what did, what does he do with like a just a jack here? And if, say it's like a ten. Okay, what is, what does he do with this ten? Say it's a low card. What does he do with this nines? He has.
Yeah, I mean, I guess they call.
Yeah.
Revisiting uh, the concept we kind of were visiting a couple hands ago about raising in position. Notice he's got top pair with a flush draw and he was not raising.
Because he had the flush draw. Without the flush draw.
Well, that's why I mentioned earlier when you had the king. I think it's gonna have a lot of kings with redrawals that are not gonna wanna raise.
You can raise this combo at some frequency.
Yeah, I think this race. All in sometimes.
I mean, all in. Uh, jack nine four.
Not good.
I like just betting this, I think. What, like five big blinds?
Yeah, it's not a good board.
Yeah, not great for us, right? Um, four pairing isn't great, but the heart is good. I think that might be enough evidence to keep barreling. We get folds from queen ten.
I feel like abandoning ship, but hearts.
I think the heart may be enough.
Big heart?
Uh.
I don't know if you need to go that big.
As well.
We're in a three bed pot here. If the flush competes, it's good for him. It's not good for us.
I jumped. I'm in the water.
Abandon ship.
Yeah.
No.
Need to. All in.
You feel so punty.
Yikes.
This is how you gotta play these hands when you three bet them, I guess.
That, well, that's, that's what I was about, that's what I was about to say, Ken. Like, if you're choosing to three bet these hands and, you know. You end up in a spot like this where you, like you said, it feels punty.
Alright, alright. We'll do that.
Probably, probably should just plant them or fold them, right?
Easy. Three bet days five off. She got flop jam turn. No problem.
You should, uh, you should look at the line when you check flop.
I'm never checking flop. It's a three bed pot.
Well. The PR agent might have something to say about that.
I don't know, though. I, I almost always see better for a three bet.
Yeah, I do too. I do too.
That thing almost range. What are you gonna do then? You're just in a different ballpark.
You say almost range, you mean seventy percent of the time.
Yeah. He bets everything here.
Eight five off bets, almost pure.
And then you just fold?
Or you? I don't know. I, I, I like to know how to play these spots cuz if you don't know how to play them, when you have somebody playing this way against you. You're gonna make mistakes.
Three bet, if you three, if you go with the three bet, I think you should bet this and then probably double barrel it. And then if you don't, just call it three flip, no?
Yeah, I mean, I like that advice, to be quite honest.
So now what? Check, check. We should, we're not supposed to.
You, I think you just jam here.
Ah, we're in a no man's land anyway. So what do we do to, on the turn?
I said that. I would probably, I don't know if I would have found the all in.
Okay, go all in. Let's see what he has.
Never would have found the all in.
He has a nine. Ouch. GTO score Ken, are you keeping up with the score?
Hey, you should replay the hand as a check. Alright, just call it this time.
Oh my god.
Wants to. No, wait, no, we wanted, I'm sorry. We wanted a three bet and then check the flop. That was the difference.
Wanna do that?
Let's play this one out. Play that, play that first.
Well, you can play this one out.
There we go. Check.
I wanna see if we get the check raise.
We get to do that a little bit here, a sliver.
Yeah, I mean, it's a rainbow board, Ken. You probably do check raise some. I just don't know if you wanna have the ace.
Yeah, small bet. Let's raise and see what happens.
Upper dangar to that pair of cards with the ace, with everything. This is party. Or not.
I just don't think it likes the ace in your hand.
Give up?
Wait, no, did we raise?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we keep going now.
I don't hate it, Joe.
Why do you wanna go, Joey?
To hell in a hand basket.
I would check.
We, I like.
But we don't have hearts. Does he defend backwards versus the check raise? Probably not.
The hearts are probably irrelevant. Ten plus every time.
What do you think he's doing with king, queen of hearts when you check raise him on that flop?
I think he's falling. I think he's falling.
Dude, he's gotta call. He has to call. This is, it's a gross, gross overfold if you're folding.
I, I would call spades and fold hearts. I just call the one suit with the top card and then I fold the rest of the shit.
I don't know how you make that distinction.
Cuz I don't wanna call them all.
And then we call.
Yeah, I like this line. I like playing uh, check or block.
Yeah. And then we don't fold.
Yeah, you call. Like, you played an ace so passively, th- this is a great trap at this point.
Maybe we won sometimes.
Not this time.
Not this time.
Which the big blinds defend, the buttons defending range versus the check raise.
Yeah, you should look at that. So. It's gonna be all suited broadways, I think, that have backdoors. Yeah, you gotta go back to the flop node. Give him a little chickie raise.
He's sticky.
All suited broadways. Plus, it's even more than that, to be honest. Like, it's.
Yeah.
He's not folding.
I haven't fallen off.
Yeah. On, on a board like this, he has to stay in with a lot of, a lot of his draws are two overs.
You see where the folds are coming from? The folds are coming from his offsuit trash that he's opening. That's like it. And like these fringy high low combos.
That are unders to the four for some reason.
Well, so the threes and the twos, I think, are bad because you're blocking critical bluffs.
Right.
Like, if he's not bluffing with his threes and if you're blocking threes and deuces, it's gonna push him towards value, which makes, well, defending kind of worse, right?
Yeah.
You see the same behavior with fives and sixes here.
But I also had, oh, nevermind.
Well, same.
One of my.
Check raise and we.
He, he, Louis believed you. He, he jammed so quick.
Let, let's move on. Let's move on. He doesn't want this.
Let's move on.
And I.
Oh.
Oh my.
So I would almost be tempted to check raise this sometimes.
Yes.
I would not.
I would, I, I would check raise this all day.
I, well, so. The thing about it is, it's not a great one because we have an undercard to the five. And it is king high, which is gonna pull down our check raise frequency at some. But I would not be surprised to see a combo like this getting in there, especially versus.
Nine six, nine six.
Nine six is.
The thing, the thing that makes me not wanna pick one is that uh.
Throw that one out.
You can never make a straight no matter what happens, you know, whereas.
No, but you can make straight, you can make straight bluffs. So like if a three comes, it's still a go card. If a six comes, it's still a go card.
I mean, you can always bluff, man. You always have the option to bluff.
I think we could get away with this one because the king of spades is out there, so that blocks the high flush, so the value of our low flush kind of goes up a hair. So I'm okay with the spades or.
That full.
Uh, did it like it?
I don't know.
Thirty percent.
Hey, look at there.
Oh, there's, it's a big raise. Look at this fifty percent.
I think it's because he chose such a small size.
How does it never fall?
Yeah.
For sure.
Well, it's cuz we're playing GTO Ken, not KTO.
You have to raise bigger because you're trying to generate full deck equity.
Well, I think that's true too. Alright, tell me.
Plus the raises.
You gotta bluff this card.
One thing you're. Alright, go ahead. Alright, what everybody thinks is you, you raise based on multiples of what their sizing is, but you should raise based on the total pot size.
Alright.
So my initial flow here would be to go either eleven or seventeen cuz we turned the back door and I'm happy.
That's too big.
Joey. Joey. No, this isn't a double, this isn't a double flush board.
I'm, I'm kind of in camp, um, I'm maybe some eleven sometimes, but I like seven and a half, I think, or seven, seven, five.
No, I take eleven.
Eleven and a half. It's eleven and a half, okay? Just a smooth sizing. We get a nice size on the river. Makes a lot of sense. And, you know, we just get a much better handle fold. Uh, I think we just call this combo. It raises a smidge. Uh, we can release. Do we ever raise this? Is it too good?
I think. Slightly too good.
Yeah. It was starting to come in there, like maybe some queen eight. It's queen seven for sure. Um.
Trace.
It may, it's gonna mix, I think. I think it's gonna heavily mix. Probably prioritize calling.
Yeah, this might be a call.
This is not a call.
The twos aren't the most.
Mostly defend by raising. We have a good kicker. This is as good of a raise as it gets. The only.
Is it? I could choose drive the frequency down a little bit, but I'm still raising.
No, Louis, what's the, um, what's the cutoff for your queens to?
Seven.
Seven.
You can raise all in some frequency probably.
Yeah.
I, I think I'd be around tens.
Two tie draw.
I think, uh, the tens are gonna be doing a lot of, um, three betting pre, so I just don't know how much frequency you have of those.
It was mostly calling, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah, it's not wrong. It is a pretty heavy frequency call. And sevens is kind of the cutoff there with queens, right? Like, look how the frequency doubles basically past that and then it increases pretty linearly.
So like, yeah.
So like sevens are about, sevens are about as profitable as. The fives are to raise. Queen seven off and queen five off. It's quite a bit different with kings if you look though. Kings are quite interesting. How it like prioritizes almost inversely, which is kinda weird to me. I guess it's because they get so many.
Some, yeah. They size up, they use the worst ones.
And they're gonna double if they hit their low card pair. Probably.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda weird because like, I mean, the getting better, better combos to fold, you could apply the same logic to the queens, yet it's like. You know.
Put a, put a check raise in the size the kings uses and then make the turn like a six and see if they double barrel with this second pair.
What do you mean?
I wanna see if the, when we check raise and a six hits, there's like king six double barrel. I think it does, right?
If we check raise king six on a queen deuce deuce, I don't think we just check, I don't think we had this as a check raise.
I thought it was in the check raise range.
Yeah, it 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 was, but.
It is, but when. When you hit six, you have marginal made head. You don't wanna.
But if the king comes, if the king comes, it's gonna bet for sure.
Yeah, I I'm talking BS. Don't, don't listen to the last two minutes of what I said. It makes no sense. The kings are different. The kings are different because there's not a pair of kings as opposed to the queen.
Yeah, there you go. I was going for the same thing.
I was, I was looking at it like, wow, doesn't make any sense, but it does.
Board ship, a board mission.
I think you check, checking is probably good here.
We're not aborting mission now.
Wow, we're not gonna abort, but we're gonna.
No, the the mission is a blast, blast off. We're, we're slowing down, you know, pumping the brakes. You gotta call. Look at this, you actually do fold some. Do you ever block?
Good night Irene.
Now I say it might be checked bold now, P.
Irene scamming us all.
If you actually got a, you got bailed out there a little bit.
Yeah, the king gets scary, right?
Yeah, he uh he pumped the brakes instead of just taking all your chips. I like calling here.
Well, he got the value on the turn. He went kind of big on the turn, right?
He did. Um, okay, so we have a two tone board and we got bottom two pair. I first a very small bet. I do prefer calling, but I think versus that sizing, we are gonna have some raising here.
No, I would, if you're gonna raise, you gotta raise five point nine.
I would, yes, I would agree with Joey.
What, when they put out a small bet, you can't raise small. You gotta put, you you're raising to put money into the pot.
Yeah, um.
Now your range wants to bet they're small.
This is a trash turn for us um.
I think it's a very good, very good turn for our range.
Yeah, we're probably, we're, we're quite protected, I would say. You can probably get away with a small, small bet.
Yeah. Oh, it's even going big.
It likes a bigger bet, actually. And the worst card in the deck. We block all the full houses though, that we don't actually have very much of.
Three big ones.
Do we ever just bluff jam this?
No.
I'm I'm check folding.
Okay.
We can block bet. What is he gonna do?
I like uh, I like checking or jamming.
I'm block betting here.
What's he gonna call with that we beat?
Nothing but.
Yeah, you want, you want folds. You don't want calls at all.
It might have some block bets, cause you have some other hands you can put in your block bet range, so.
If you, if you're gonna block that, block bet and thin value are the same exact thing.
Uh, uh, Joey, you have to have some nuts in your block bet range, some loaded hands.
Oh, I'm not saying you don't. But if you're going to bet. Ten block bet or thin value, you have to have some hands in his range that he's going to call that you still beat.
Alright.
Yeah.
That's a check.
Oh, look at Louis. Louis had it. I was wrong.
Yeah.
No, check is right.
It's still better to check.
No, 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 no. I I was saying it's either checking or all inning. And we found the um.
Okay. Yeah, it, yeah.
The problem is LP, as we know, has no nutted hands in his block bet range. Cause he ten X pots those. So that's the exploit against him. When he block bets, you just fucking put him in hell. Cause he's unprotected.
Damn, please, please.
You're giving away uh.
Don't give it all away.
You gave it all away. I've been watching for two years.
This one, we have a queen.
Maybe you call.
That's it. He's never streaming again.
Never.
Well, play against him. You don't have to worry about me.
I will never strategically recover from this.
That's great call. I will never strategically recover from this. Oh, check. Call.
Oh.
Do we bluff?
Yeah.
Do we bluff?
Yeah.
It's not even a bluff really, man. It's, I think it's just controlling the pot.
Block goes check, check. We have second bear. We bet small.
Do you bet small again or do you check here?
That's mine again. It's a five. Oh.
Actually, you just go for value.
Kind of turn it into like a semi bluff, it feels like.
No, no, it's value.
You're targeting like ace highs and.
The five, the five actually protects our kicker. Cause now we have two pair with a jack kicker.
Oh yeah, I understand why we bet five, because if we have a five in our range, that's what we're gonna do. So the six are mixing in there.
Apparently.
And the jack are gonna bet big as well here. Yeah, okay, makes sense. Our fives are gonna wanna bet big, right? They're not gonna bet small with a fiver.
Five wants to bet big or Jack wants to bet big. The only thing that doesn't is a six.
Yeah. So it's.
Uh, do we ever just jam this?
I call some, a lot actually.
Nope.
No, it's alright.
I thought the shooter once called some. Is it ace queen calls, ace jack raises?
Which one? You're right, Ken. It's just it's first a button range. You have to be wider versus the button. Like if it was the cutoff, I wouldn't be, I think you'd be correct.
Forty, I think ace queen suited must uh call and ace jack raises. I'm pretty sure it's, let me see, it's one of those.
I think you're too tight. It's not calling ace queens.
Against the wide range, you're gonna, you're gonna three bet a lot more value.
For value, right?
Yeah, like ace, jack and ace ten are gonna be value raises there.
See, this is, this is the wild card right here, Louis. Like when you say like you three bet, you always see bet, like. I I I face this sometimes.
Well, would you like to see Ranger? Cause our combo.
Oh, I I understand what the range greatly does.
Yeah.
I know the general motion. I mean, look at this. Okay, actually sixty percent.
Checking sixty percent.
I thought we were gonna have like thirty percent checks. This is double what I anticipated.
That's a very wet board. So if you see bet, you three bet, see bet this one large, right?
Uh, not really. The seabed's about half pot.
Oh, we already had the solution there? Well, it's kind of larger than a three bet pot. Half pot's kind of large.
Hello SPR.
So why would you check the these combos? They get that, we don't really get better ace to fold, right? So that's how many it. We don't get a better flush draw. We only get worse flush draws to fold.
I think the question is, why on this board do we have such a big checking range? We have, we have to determine which boards. So I think it's. Our exceptions to this. Three bet, C bet. Guideline.
This just mashes his range, his defending range versus three bets. The button defends really wide and he just has a whole lot of stuff that wraps around all these cards.
Yeah, I learned a fancy term yesterday. It's got poor equity stability. Meaning that like the nuts on the flop are often not gonna be the nuts on the river.
Even on the turn.
Yeah, they have, they have another word for that dynamic.
So, yeah, yeah, it's saying the same thing.
I I'm too old, I'm too, too old to learn new terms.
We'll, we'll stick with uh the one you're comfortable with, dynamic.
Thank you.
You're very well.
What, what, what was it? What, what did you call it?
It's got poor equity stability.
Poor equity stability.
BBZ's gotta come up with new fancy terms. Cause they charge a lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay, so I see a clear pathing here. With two Broadway on the board, we check it out.
What's the function of the flush draw?
Well, there's queen ten nine rainbow where we do a lot of checks.
Flush draw makes us size up.
Size up? With regards to the checking frequency.
I I see some rainbow boards that are still checking a lot too. It might be the two, two Broadway.
Like whenever we have two Broadway, we check like fifty percent.
The problem is that this shallow versus the button, the calling range has. Way too many Broadway combos.
But it it's not all.
Yeah, I think I do agree. So like, you know what, uh, an interesting heuristic to look at here, Louis, would be like, if you, if you pump up the um. The, the effective stack to like more deeper stack, I think it'll be a more. It'll be a strategy you're probably more. I guess used to.
Probably have more checks even because the button will have less four bet jams. Well, the button's gonna. The button calls super wide versus the blind, so he's got great board coverage on these type of flops. Uh, it's a little less shallower because he's got four bet jams.
Yes, um, so that's exactly kind of what we've been tiptoeing around here a little bit is um. You know, when we say it's a really dynamic board or like it has poor equity stability or whatever fancy terms. Players have um a lot of draws.
If you look at the. Every ace high board, okay? They're all pretty good, but not the ace king board. It's really ace king. We check fifty percent of the time. As soon as it comes ace queen. Ace queen here, we we already bet a lot more and more and more and more. So it's really like, if it comes ace king on the board, we don't bet as often. So that's for the ace high board. So we bet everything but not ace king board. And for king eye board, seems to be like king queen board.
So button's probably like defending king seven suited when you three bet, you know, so he's just got a lot, he's got all, he's got a lot of aces, a lot of kings. Obviously, he's not folding his high cards, flood that are suited especially.
What, what's that anomaly in the middle? King, jack, ten, king, jack, ten, can, oh yeah, king, three, three Broadway, you bet more.
Uh, depends on the, the.
Well, look at the king, jack, ten grouping.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's just uh, I think it's just a function of how many draws. Like he should have some eight, nine suited here. He should have some ten, eight suited. Should have some ten, nine suited, some queen ten. Like, there's just infinite. Combos that he's gonna be putting chips in here with.
So big black button defends all the way down to king four suited at some frequency, king five's full frequency.
Oh, Louis, um, look at the um. Equity lines.
Ace seven off. It starts mixing.
So, see, yeah, see how our equity, equity runs.
Equity, equity should run very close here, right? That's gonna be, I think, the equity running close is why we are probably playing high check.
Now, there should be like an equity line graph.
Yeah, you gotta end the bar graph thing. We had seen it before. You have to change the um.
Thin ranges, if you're.
Look, look at view chart.
There it is. Yeah, there it is. So look how close.
That's, that is. The cause.
Hey, look at the buttons defending range. It's just like.
We're out of possession with no um. Equity advantage.
Well, so it's like our value range collides right in the middle of his. His calling range. So like his defense range and our three betting range. They're just like. On top of each other. We have like. The nut advantage here, like we have the pocket kings, the pocket jacks, the ace kings. But he's got infinite draws and combo draws and. You know, stuff that's gonna be doing pretty well against like, like if we have a set of kings or we have pocket aces here and he's got queen ten of spades. You know, I think he's a favorite at this point.
Yeah, I'm just, this is a hand that I'm gonna find in my uh. Checking range on a three bet pot and I'm going to check raise it and run.
What are you doing here, crazy?
We're gonna have some fun.
He, he just wants three bed pots.
Actually, it's gonna be funnier than that. See this part of the deck here, like our polar.
Yeah, the trash, yeah, the polar trash, right?
Like it's gonna be, it would be fun to see how we play turns with most of these. So from ten nine to ten six.
I mean, I three bet him, so I'd like to say.
You gotta take, take king four suited out.
Gotta get better playing them.
I think this is, I think this is a good idea, Louis. I don't, yeah, I think you should just focus on the trash. I agree. I mean, cause everyone knows how to play pocket aces post flop, but do you really know how to play queen six off suit?
Nope. I was, why I three bet just praying they fall and I hate when they call.
Queen six off suit.
Bluff these and they call. I just feel like I was bluffing and they four bet jammed and I folded. That's how.
Alright, Ken, take, take the reins, the driver's seat. You three bet, you've made a mess.
Definitely see bet in this one.
Yep, what size?
That's good, small.
Now, what interesting me, interests me.
So the two doesn't help me at all. I am giving up.
Nah, man, it's such a brick, dude. You gotta go again.
And half queen six off here.
You know, you're not showing this down, man. You're gonna get fish tags the rest of your life. Make them pay.
No, I'm not gonna have to show it down. Check folding.
I think we have.
And I checked, they bet and I'm like, okay, it's your hand.
The two.
Okay, can, can this run, can Theo?
He checked. Alright, we got a six. I'm all in.
Queen high, what do we need to get? I think, hold on, before you click, do we have to jam to get? King high to fold? I say no. So I like to go, I use where I use my small. Like valuey block, like smaller bluffs and then I could just fold. Like I could put eighteen in and still have. What do I have thirteen ships left to battle with? I like. Yeah.
I'm jamming. I'm actually punting.
So it's the lowest EV, but it's the lowest loss of EV bluff. We got them. We got them with the best hand.
Oh, is this a very tweet?
It's in here. I think it's very in here at some frequency.
Jesus Christ.
If it's not a three bet, you need to learn some, you need to do some range construction work.
That's right.
With people.
Half pot.
Who's taking this hand?
Uh, whoever, I don't, I mean.
Why go out here, Ken?
Uh, it's two broadways, ace, jack.
You got middle pair though. I kinda like going smaller, I think.
I like check. I think I like check here.
I ain't checking.
That's my only apprehension. I don't think you get to check on a ace, jack.
Yeah.
We just, we just saw the graphs.
Yeah, he's got the, he's got a lot of aces in.
Equity doesn't run as close on an ace, jack, five board as it does.
It was like ace king, ace king board.
There's no direct interaction here. Like there's gut shots available, but. You know.
Was like ace king and king queen that were not so good.
I'm not saying that this hand checks a hundred percent. It's pure check, but I'm willing to bet that there's some checks in.
I believe you because we have a jack, right? But.
Yeah.
Oh, it's small.
Yeah, that's what I would have bet five.
Yeah.
Um, okay, now I'm, now I'm playing check.
Is it that easy?
I hate the river, but I'm checking.
Yeah, you gotta check.
It might, it might block, but I like check.
Now what?
What a joker, what a joker.
He hits his queen. What do you wanna do?
Alright, three bets. Somebody make a mess.
We should guess the three bet frequency. We know these combos are three betting. We should try to figure out how often before we click three bet.
Alright, that seems like a fun exercise, Ken.
Yeah, a little fun extra tidbit.
The eight, I think is primo. For three betting.
See, I think it's more like ten percent. I think.
I would say, I was thinking thirty percent.
Seven is better. Team eight is a lot more of a call.
Gonna raise worse kings than this.
Yeah.
Maybe so. Actually, it's a full frequency.
Wow, eight, seven.
I thought we were only choosing three bet combos.
Well, we, we.
Get this one out of there.
He picked the region that they all come from. Check fold. If you have one.
Oh.
If you got one, I think this is a good one. If you got one, I think this is a good one.
Calm down, Ken. Calm down.
How'd you check a paired flop LP on a three? Oh, we didn't three bet. Never mind.
Wait, wait in three bet.
I thought we three bet guys, yeah.
Uh, bet small, maybe.
No, 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 no.
Check it down, yeah.
King eye good enough.
Show it down.
Oh, it doesn't want to. Well.
Bluff raise.
No, 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 no. We just fold.
There was point three percent all in.
Damn, value betting is ace high.
Yeah, you got you. Alright, three vet it sometimes. It's a ten.
Okay.
Mostly mostly calls, I think.
Yeah, you're right. Mostly calls.
The nine.
But ten percent, eleven, eleven, a half percent, whatever it was.
That's a high frequency one.
Ace high. We got a spade. I mean, a lot of supporting evidence for a five big blinds in the middle.
Take this out. Not five. I'm on with five.
Spade, we go nine with a spade, we go five.
I like that. I think that will actually, man, that's kind of that's kind of crazy.
Is it?
Maybe. It may be alright. Feels kind of scary.
Why? Why is it scary?
Because you got nada. Yeah, I mean, it's equally distributed. It seems like it gets. He likes to go bigger a little bit more when you have the spade.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Tennis babe.
But I mean, at the end of the day, you're you're splitting here. You could simplify your strategy.
Yeah.
This is a good one. I like this combo a lot. Thirty percent of the time, forty percent of the time. There it is, thirty. Uh, bet small, five big blinds.
I agree.
Five?
I like five.
Yeah.
We're just stacking off here. We're never folding a king when we chose to three bet this and make top pair, so.
I would check.
Yeah.
I kind of want to go. Does it ever go fifty percent here?
I think it.
What what? What do you get? What what's your? What's your bowl here?
I mean, I guess the fact that we have a spade's not great. He's gonna have maybe some ten X that continued with like a backdoor, like Jack ten of hearts, maybe Queen ten of hearts that might continue here.
You're digging deep.
With this SPR, I think you just go small again, honestly.
What about middle pairs? Eight, seven, or eight sixes?
It's a three bet, but he could have a better king. We need break and not fold.
Yeah, the way I say is if we check and let him bet, our hand has more equity against his betting range than his calling range.
I agree.
Twenty-five percent.
Oh.
Oh, goes better.
Yeah, top pair, stack part ratio one.
Let's go. I'm kind of with Pete here. I think I just am gonna barrel this off to oblivion.
Okay.
All in.
Yeah, you gotta disrupt it there, right?
It won't let me check call. Oh, that's why I see.
Yeah, okay, so he's got spades. He's got a gutty. Like, you're getting paid on the turn by this guy.
That's right. That's right. It's very important to do it. Hmm.
I like three betting this one. I think the eight, they, the weaker one's gonna be a little more attractive, but this one's definitely in there.
What's your guess? Eight percent.
Thirty percent?
Yeah, I was gonna say like.
Nah, I take thirties too high.
I was like sixty.
Yeah, the nine, right? We have a, we have one pip under the like, uh, we attacked the olive is like, uh, offsuit tens, all of his offsuit nines, but.
It's also an ace, an offsuit ace that doesn't play fan, you know, eat that easily post flop.
Yeah, I agree, Ken. I agree with that. Um, king, king, seven. I like a small bet. I wouldn't be surprised to see some two.
Yeah.
Even.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good card to keep barreling, I think.
I would check.
Yeah.
Nah, I don't think so because the flush completed and we're the aggressor in a three bet pot.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. We don't have a ton of flushes here, but the the, I don't know if the paired king is kind of an overriding component here.
For me, I think we already did our job here. Three bet, we see that he's still around. I mean, what are we gonna do?
Well, I'm checking. I'm not folding. I'm checking, but I'm not gonna fold.
Oh, it's an all.
No, all in, yeah.
Okay, and why?
Savage. I'll never learn.
Ken, I think it's pretty easy, man. Like, when you three bet and you got this nine of spades in your hand and you gotta and you got a board that coordinates with you as well as this. I think you just gotta find these things.
I think it has something to do with the fact that the nine is over the seven and the eight, so it still has equity, same for the ten, whereas the hand at six doesn't have that.
I mean, you're also kind of blocking the continues, right? Like blocking nine, ten, which is pretty good.
They're still mostly, they're still mostly checking, right?
Uh, no, it was mostly jamming this combo.
Then then the ace nine in particular, but it's really nine next hands want to do something special that six hands are not doing.
But hold on, if you have the ace, why is the heart changing?
Uh, I don't know how influential the heart is.
Heart and the diamond of the heart, just the heart doesn't want to jam.
Heart is a bad blocker here.
Yeah, uh, yeah. So you're blocking his.
The ace of hearts.
The combos you want him to have, I guess. I mean, I think it's really just a function of like, if you do them all, you're probably doing it too much. I don't know if it's like, there's something magical about the heart and the spade there that warrants a decrease in frequency. Maybe there is.
Well, the the heart is like the, there could be a backdoor flush.
The the ace of hearts will be contain a lot of the backdoor hearts that he's continuing on.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so we should stuff it here with ace nine.
And we just, we have, look at this. Look at this.
Did he cause?
He did.
Right.
With his uh, with his pair and the nut flush redraw. Um, low frequency three bet here, I think twenty percent.
Thirty.
We split hairs. Look at there, twenty-five. Oh, he got us.
Not fold. It's the worst ace you call there.
Uh, that's a good question.
Ace ten?
Maybe.
Ace nine?
No, no, no.
I think ace nine's a bit wide. I think it would be. I think it's gonna mix ace ten, I think.
Ace jack is a, is a like a.
Ace jack's too good, right? Like, you gotta call ace jacks.
Ace ten is the, you make it based on your opponent. If opponent is from like Israel, you always call ace ten.
Yeah, he's gonna show up with like eight, five suited and stuff like that. Uh, same story here. I think you're gonna see like twenty percent frequency.
Can we see the call off range?
You want me to look at it for you real quick? Dude, it's just forty big blinds. It's not the full street. You gotta look at the one pre flop. It's not this one. This is the king, king, seven.
It it's pre flop anyhow, so it doesn't matter what the board is.
Right, so he just wants to see like if you three bet ace four off.
Ace nine.
And uh.
Alright.
And.
So as as Louis suggested, it, the floor is ace ten and you should make adjustments based on your opponent, which is correct. Um, higher frequency here, forty percent.
I bet a rip.
Hmm, I think Ken's right. High frequency rip.
Ken is crazy.
You gotta click the magic button again. Action. Action Jackson, repeat.
Click on pre flops, I will say.
There you go. Yeah.
Forty percent all in.
Which means a hundred percent for me.
Good combo. I like three betting this one. Forty percent, thirty percent.
Thirty percent, yeah.
Oh.
Pretty good, pretty good.
Two tone, ten, five deuce. I kind of like a bigger bet here, too, I think. I'm kind of in camp fifty.
I think this board is very dry for them, so we could probably go small.
I think it's gonna be hard to defend, so I think we want to generate some more folds. I would go this.
Yeah, yeah. What did you do with ace ten, with king ten, with pocket jacks, pocket queens?
Yeah, we have a lot of vulnerable strength here, but no, it goes smaller checks. Look at that.
Just a dry flop. It's disconnected. I mean, the spades are make it somewhat, you know.
This is a give up. White flagging this card.
What about the king and spade?
Yeah.
Uh, king of spades is an all in card.
Is it all in?
I think so.
Hmm. Okay, yeah. All in, king and spade.
Fold, yeah. Can't win them all. Um, jack six. I'm, I don't think I've ever three bet this combo.
Yeah, nah.
Eight percent, eight percent.
Four percent.
Four.
But might as well learn how to do it, right? Alright, we don't have an over to the queen, which is kind of trash here. Um.
We do. We do have two overs to the five, though.
We're betting our six here, so a draw card, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna implement the uh, three bet, C bet strategy here.
We size up with the jack of spade.
We're looking for low card runouts to keep bluffing.
No, not true.
Yeah, it's just kind of whatever.
Besides download the jack of spade here. Other ones are betting big, more.
The six is our key card on this flop, I think.
Man, so the ace is pretty good for our three betting range and we have like absolutely trash here. I don't even know if we jam. I think if we, I think.
I'm also out, Ken, but I'm out because he.
Uh, yeah, I'm checking a hundred percent. We're playing the six. High cards. We're not playing our jack at all here. Well, we, but see about this flop of my, the way I say it. We have three, five, six, so I think we're betting, playing our six. I think our jacks are relevant unless we get lucky and hit it, and then we probably slow down.
Yeah, I agree, Ken.
But with the ace of spades, what does our range want to do, Ken?
Well. That's the flush completed.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what, I mean, we play all parts of our range differently, right?
The flush complete, we check, but it's an ace and we're in a three bet pot with all the best aces.
Yeah, I think they're having the, I think this hand doesn't three bet a lot because having a jacks particularly bad. Like like here we are on the turn and we have a jack, which is like what we we should be targeting. Like, it just.
So with the spade, we go all in or we bet small, without the spade, we check.
Yeah, it's equity driven, right?
That seems to be the thing with all the garbage here. But not ace five. It's not a pair, ace four.
It's a gutty, man.
Yeah, okay.
So the range kind of splits between small and all in here.
And a pair.
Cool.
Mostly all in.
Yeah, I think it's just trying to protect the very top of the range because they're gonna get more EV by betting small. You don't necessarily want to generate folds.
So we bet as a bluff with these high-low combos. We hit the flush draw, we bow, we see that, and when they completes on the turn, we just rip with our blood, our flush blocker.
I would almost, uh, I would almost be willing to say like, you could probably just remove jack, X, high-low combos from this entire range. Just don't ever three bet them.
I like it. I like it. You just play play the board.
Yeah, the jack, the jack particularly is like absolute, it's like a dumpster card. Like, you want to target jack X. Usually. Like, if we're not targeting jacks, what are we, what are we after here?
Yeah.
Like this dumpster.
They fold a lot, too, though. You're ignoring the fold equity. They're folding.
Just call this.
Forty percent of their range, you're picking up the chips immediately, forty percent of the time.
You don't need to always three bet. We just want to play this range, right?
Hey, man, there, there's plenty of offsuit ace, kings and queens to use that logic with.
Uh, we want to raise.
You know, this is not a bad raise combo, Louis. I kind of like raising.
Hold on, LP, before you click, didn't you say the king, the aces? Yeah, so he's defending all the way down to king four suited.
You got three straight, three flush.
King eye off, probably.
Ken, we have a jack of spade.
You got three straight, three flush.
I can see it.
Six, six interacts with the seven also.
To fold. We have a jack. Super easy, oh.
Uh, you gotta keep going, man.
I think we kind of did.
You do, man, like.
Two worst cards is the key cards for the button, you said, or the ace and the king, and you just want to keep bluffing off?
Well, we pick.
You got a straight blocker, man.
The ten is in the box if we bet big.
But Ken, we called.
Everything to be in the box, who bet big? If it was a spade, we would just go bananas.
Oh, wait, so you're gonna lead bluff here, then? You called flop.
No, we checked, raised.
We checked raised.
A simple strategy.
I think I'm like a nine point eight.
Oh, yeah. Check raise and ever pick up equity, you should almost always, almost always be betting, but this is.
Okay, it's a check.
You're already, you're gonna get.
All in, all in.
You're gonna get your own simplification, LP. You said the ace and the king are particularly bad. They're both there.
Why am I listening to you?
Because Ken's talking and I'm talking.
That's fold.
And I'm talking convincingly at you. I like three betting this one.
Yep.
Three bet jammy.
Think it's a large bet.
So it's two tone and it's nine, ten in a three bet pot, pretty close to Jack ten two tone. Um, I would not be surprised to see some shenanigans on a board like this.
Fifty percent or seventy-five?
I like fifty percent.
I think that one was too large.
Two pure checks. New spade, I guess.
Yeah, I need a spade to bet here. And nine is like one of the worst boards for us.
So if you look at the uh, the solution, I bet it's gonna be high frequency checks and very big bets on this type of texture. So like forty, fifty percent, almost seventy percent and very big bets. This is the uh, this is what I would call the Jack ten effect.
But this exact combo never bets large. It's like barely even barreling a spade, it looks like.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's just the nature of the board. This uh, this two-tone middling board that really connects with his flatting range versus the three bet. Like, um. You just don't.
Get deliberately bluff. We gotta have some uh.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta be respectful, right? Because basically his entire flatting range is gonna call a small bet here. Most of his flatting range is gonna call a medium sized bet. So it's like, you know.
Alright.
It's going quite mucho grande here.
So we check. And then he bets and we fold and we move on.
Louis, can you add the rate? Can you add the randomizer to it?
What do you mean?
There's a way to add a randomizer to the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What do you want to do with a randomizer?
Well, if, I'm think, yeah, I'm thinking like if it's a thirty percent raise, we you, we use the randomizer to determine whether we're going to three bet or call.
Yeah, but we all know how to play these hands as a call. We don't know how to play them very well as a three bet, right? Um, I think this is a high frequency call.
No, 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 no.
It still raises quite a bit, thirty percent, quite a bit. Yeah, yes. Seventy percent of the time I can play this hand pretty well as a call. Thirty percent of the time is a raise, though. I like a bet small. Bet large.
Oh, bet large.
Ish. Large ish. So I don't know how relevant the six is. Um, I wouldn't be surprised to see some continued barreling here, but I kind of want to check.
I surrender.
Ace high, let's go to showdown.
We got the heart.
We do have the heart, but the queen is particularly bad.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hot. Let's show it out.
Oh, man, this is, this is, I don't know what to do.
Why you want to call here, Pete? Want to get the names?
It's ten percent of the pot, man.
Your ace high is gonna wind up defending here.
No, it's not. Not that, not that low.
I'm surprised.
Ace jack. Such a, such a small bet.
Ace jack, ace ten, maybe.
I guess as a problem, they have no real house. They block his blocks. You don't want to have a jack or a ten there.
Raise.
I like a raise.
Twenty-five percent.
I think, yeah, I'm with Ken. I concur, Ken. Look at that. GTO wizard. Small bet. I wouldn't be surprised to see two and five here.
My checks, um.
Yeah.
Never, huh?
I've never seen a large bet like this on a monotone board.
Yeah, it's rare, right?
Well, if you look at the new advanced masterclass, they show that when, well, monotone boards, when.
No, I've already seen that Jonathan, Jonathan's class has monotone boards is mostly check, mostly bet small.
The advanced class?
Did you see the brand new advanced class?
Yeah, Ken, the beta is out now.
I've had it for a month. I haven't looked at it. Yeah.
Ken is keppel. How could you?
I, I get to test that shit out.
You get to test it, but you don't test it.
Well, because they didn't actually ask the, they gave it to us, but they didn't actually ask us to test it this time.
I, um. Yeah, we, I like, I like another barrel here, Louis. What do you think?
Um.
Jam.
I don't mind a jam. I think a jam is reasonable.
Flush, draw, straight draw, no showdown, stuff the turkey.
Thing is, we do have a gotcha and we do have a draw that is, we basically have a draw that struggles against a racer. So I want to check and pray. Sometimes he checks back and we hit.
Rip it.
I'm kind of going rip it here.
Check, yeah, that's not the heuristic we've seen you nip. Get it in there. There you go.
See these enough, maybe I will actually start learning it.
There you go. Thirty percent of the time, every percent of the time.
Every time.
When you find three bets with, you know, your jack sevens and your tens and your ten sixes. You're going to have to take some high risk lines.
A five.
I'm a five guy.
Drive board.
I know we got a marginal made, but I want to get like folds from queen tins and stuff like that.
Yeah, but if we bet five, he's supposed to call a lot of queen tens.
Oh. Size up. Okay.
Queen seven, I mean, I'm good for twenty five percent here. I don't know about you guys.
It's like, uh, yeah, it's a. Maybe thirty five percent.
I'm calling.
The worst, the queen, the worst the queen gets to more wants to bet.
Five, no, queen seven too. Okay, it's fine.
Yeah.
Seventeen percent.
Seventeen percent.
Queen nine's too good. Queen eight's a little bit kind of in between. I thought queen seven did it.
Half pot, let's go.
I went small.
We bowled them.
I'm all in.
That's the turkey.
Have a fair between that pot, it's a happy day.
Eat it, Jack ten. All right, raise.
Forty five percent, was it?
Uh, it was, it was in there enough.
I like a call with this one.
There you go, Joey. Okay.
It's got some attractive check raise properties, but it's ace high, so I don't.
And he went a little big now.
And he went bigger. I think we folds.
Yeah, I'm folding.
Screw you, pocket deuces. Raise.
Hmm, cool.
Twenty five percent of the time.
Yeah.
Ooh.
Uh, this is a good bet. It's a brickyish board. We're blocking, we have a relevant flush blocker. I kind of, I don't know. What do you think? Five or? Five or 10 big blinds.
I think there, there might even be some twos mixed in here.
I think it's five or two because it's a purple.
Might be some.
Yeah, he just doesn't have deuces though. I don't know how relevant the deuce is.
But it's, it's a battle of, of how many over pairs we three bet versus how many, uh, aces and stuff that he has here.
Now, how do we play this turn?
This is a great.
Part of our range.
Yeah, this is greatly a brick. I, um, I think we still go.
We go where?
Uh.
Going with this.
To the cage to, to the cage to get a, uh, another bullet to play the tournament again.
What's the reasoning behind your bet here?
Well, the hands that we are typically betting on the flop in our value range are still. Um, beating pretty much everything on the turn.
Okay.
Like how, what, what kind of nine X is the guy continuing with here except for like? Nine of spades X, maybe.
What do you do with ace, king, and queen, and jack, and ten that you see?
Value bet, value bet and everything smaller checking.
You know, that's a good question, Louis, and I think, I think. You could still value bet the ace kings.
Double barrel, a cipher value.
Yeah, ace, king, and ace.
Best they saw.
Double barrel for value, ace, jack, and ace ten will check.
I think we could be in no man's land here, folks. Okay, it does bet again some, but checking is a very reasonable.
Oh, why we bet again? Because we have the spade.
Well, you know how it is, Darren. You know how it is.
Was a small bet, LP.
Yeah, let's get a small one in there. Now, it's good for us. If we, if we double barrel, we're all in here, right?
I am raising the flag.
Oh.
It was a question. It wasn't, it was, it was a suggestion. It wasn't a suggestion. It was a question. Okay, okay, okay. You win. Uh, Jack nine. This isn't there sometimes, yeah?
I'm mostly call, I'm mostly calling this in fact.
The ones that are connected, I like to call more than raise.
Me too.
I agree.
To raise.
So, yeah, we can check raise this at some frequency, I think.
What?
Raise.
So you got two overs, you're blocking two of the back doors, you got three of a straight.
Not without, you can raise fold if you.
And you can, you can raise this one some. I'm fairly confident.
Four?
I like call.
No, 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 go six. Okay, call.
Hundred percent call.
Guys, like with the backdoor flush would make a lot more sense. This is not a good one.
I wonder, yeah. Maybe I'm stretching.
Jack nine of spade is always a race.
Oh, no, a hundred percent. The backdoor flushes are like not even in question. I'm stretching a bit here for sure.
You just have two over card and nothing going on. It's not good.
I'm stretching a bit.
You can call for our cards. Now we got a, gotcha.
It's an excellent check raise versus the guys that auto c bet a hundred percent after that.
I guess we fold because of sizing. Is there a sizing with you?
You gotta, you gotta let this go, my man. You gotta let it go.
Do we ever rip it?
One big blind, Mike Paul.
You don't have enough equity.
Yeah, so just a fold.
Yeah, as I would, as I say, sometimes this combo is a logical expansion. Raise.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, jerk off. I fold. You win. Nice hand. Uh, low frequency, maybe high frequency call. I, I call this.
Twenty percent raise, right?
Maybe.
Fifteen, twenty?
Yeah, nailed it. That's small, five.
On the blind.
Did we three bet?
Five reduced, five reduce. Uh, we don't need to really size up. Maybe we go seven and a half or fourteen's.
Yes, set, seven and a half is better for pot size.
Now we go all in.
Yep. Oh, look at all those checks.
Look at this sneaky, sneaky, sneaky.
Your favorite spot, Gavin.
I, hey, by the way, I, I never, I never three bet aggress, aggressive check with my value. I don't have this node in my game.
Do you not?
When the SPR is this low, I, I can't find you either.
You might catch me three betting, betting, check, like check, check.
We got cord.
What do you mean? You see this? You think you got cooler?
Well, you did get cooler. Raise forty percent of the time. All right, jerk off. I fold.
Oh, this is just outside.
Easy fold. Now, for me.
It's a, it's a call against some people.
Low frequency raise thirty percent.
Uh, he's getting a little out of line now, this guy.
Yeah, what is this guy? Uh, do we ever check this?
No.
I like bet small. I like bet five. I'm just betting five here. I like posing the question though. Now we can play check, yeah? We can play check here.
Hit, but you can get value from the single spade draws. Oh.
Whoa.
Small.
Down bet.
Yeah, flush completed. Is that good for us or bad for us?
Our exact hand, it's not very good at all for us.
You want to give him the chance to bluff and you do it by either checking or min betting.
Do it again?
I don't know, man. I kind of want to play, um.
All in?
Check call.
I kind of want to do check sometimes here, to be honest.
Nets. All right.
I like a raise.
Nope.
Yeah, this is the one we found earlier. I asked him to take it out.
Yep, you're right.
Yeah, I, I think king seven and king eight are pure call.
There's, king seven raises.
And it's king eight, king nine. There are two right next, I, in the chart, there are two right next to each other that are a pure call.
King nine for sure.
Check. Fold. You win. I fold.
Right now, I want to keep some time to review hands. You guys got hands, you got marks?
Hmm, let's look. I don't know.
All right, let's look at this one quickly. So my questionnaire is. Is it too nitty to check the river?
Too nitty to check the river? What did you do? You raised.
Well, uh. He raised, I called.
Check bet small, sure. So you're shallow and he didn't raise you. So that kind of drives down the queen X frequency a bit. Turn, he checks, you bet small again. I think when you bet small in the turn, man, like he's got enough trash in here. That, uh, it is too nitty. Like you didn't really polarize the turn much, so. I kind of like another small, medium barrel. I just don't think he's got a lot of queen X here.
I just said, I'm in, I'm in the study group.
You gave him, uh, two opportunities to check raise you and he didn't take them.
Yeah. So you think if I bet small on this turn, I should? Uh, bet more than nine, nine big nine on the river?
I would, I, I kind of like maybe like a half pot or something. Maybe a little bit more. I think it, it needs to be in a value size, I would think.
If you have a diamond, you do it anyway? Would you, do you do it more without a diamond?
Uh, it probably is more attractive maybe without a diamond because he's going to have some diamonds here, I guess. Maybe like ace of diamonds for.
I think it's better without a diamond because it gives him more hands to call with that you're ahead.
Uh, I mean, I don't find value. I, I don't bet that river. It looks like I haven't seen it. He, I didn't see the whole line. I struggle with those GGs, but if. I mean, if there's bets and there's a queen on the board, I don't see a value bet on the river. So you go bet, bet.
No, I think we're. I called pre flood. So that's already like, I'm, I think I'm going to treat that a lot, but this guy's a net.
Yeah, I think, uh, bet, bet, I think it's a two street hand, right? You got a queen on the board. So like, why do you want to turn tens into three streets? I don't.
There's, there's no straights. There's no straights. The only better pair is, you know. I, I kind of, I think it's a little thin too. I mean, I, I mean, I mean, a little nitty not, not to get value on the river.
Why? I think the one thing no about two, three or, I do agree it's a two street hand. But. The size of Louis' bets.
Yeah, that's where I'm at too.
Are, are really small.
That's where I'm at. I think you bet it if you go, if you take this like small, small line.
Like if he polarized the turn, it's definitely a check.
Yeah, I, I agree too, a hundred percent. And I don't think this is a hand you get to polarize the turn really with.
Okay, so I should not double barrel.
Yeah, yeah. So this is the goofy part, right? Double barreling. So.
So you could bet river if it goes, if he checks river now, you get to probably bet river.
Yeah, play like you got nine.
I think he gets to bet river.
Well, if he does it though, and if he checks river, you get to bet again, then I think you'll bet your tens again.
Oh, so that's where the value can come with my hand. I checked my the turn so that it's going to.
Yes, this is how, this is how I play this. This is how I play this spot. Like I just bluff catch this a lot.
Okay.
But, uh, just play it like a bet small again.
Now I bet I'm supposed to value. So it's the two street thing. And overall, like if I bet two on the flop and ten on the river, it's like twelve big ones. It should be, but. It's like, it's good for two streets, right? But the line checking back the turn is better.
That's a good bluff catcher. Like they said, that's probably where you get a lot of value to checking.
Yeah, well, actually, if I check, he's going to block bet is that ace eight? Like second pair of turtles, check, check on the turn and then I'm just going to capture whatever he's bluffing.
And to review.
Yeah, okay, yeah, check the turn, makes sense.
All right, I put a hand in the chat here. If you want to look at that, Peter's got one too. Bet, call, check. I bet small, could size up, but. We bet small, he calls. We polarize a little bit on the turn. He calls and donk jams over pot the river. Do we bluff catch?
Yeah, of course. You got the ace of diamond, you got two pair.
Yeah, I think, I think bluff catching here is probably good. What would, what would the worst combos?
Dude's out of line, I think.
Well, he, yeah, I mean, he's sporting a, a wonderful thirty two from Brazil. And he turns his, uh, weak ace into a bluff.
Probably not even an open and six max low jack because you get three bets so much. It's just a bad open, I think.
Yeah, no, no, he's from the big blind. He calls. So it's a little, it's a little bit different.
There's, there's. For sure.
So is one of these guys is sitting out?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think, uh, Tiga is new to the table. I'm not sure though.
Yeah, I like this, but you want the river?
You can look at it. I thought maybe like, I'm kind of curious where the line's drawn when we see something like this on the river. He's obviously out of line. I just don't. I wasn't sure if like. You ever do this with a hand like that on the river? I haven't looked at it just to.
So it went check, bet, call, check, bet, call, then he led all in on, all over. Yeah, so that's, that's not good. That's definitely not good. If anything, he should check ready flop.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking like if he ends up on the river with a flush. He might be doing this. Does he ever do it with ten X? I don't know.
The seven blocker, I think the ace blocker would be way better than the seven blocker, but it's not.
Absolutely.
It's not available really, right? So.
Well, I think you get, he gets the river and I think he just determines that he's not winning a showdown.
Like if he didn't have the eight, if there wasn't a eight, if he wasn't already paired and he just had the ace of diamonds, then it might be a lot better.
Mm hmm, yeah.
I want to throw a block bet in instead of jamming my whole stack.
Right, I, I could see that maybe being a, um, a thing.
Yeah.
Be, because it's a one liner and you have to call with the straight, he's going to jam his flushes there on the river.
I like jamming flushes here on the river, by the way, Pete.
Another thing is.
You put ten X with a blocker in a horrible, horrible situation.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say another thing is we do have all the offsuit tens in our range as well. So like, it's not like we're lacking any straights here.
Right, so this is like a zero EV call and it really is independent of the, um. The diamond here, it seems. But it, it does call and it. It calls basically all these two pairs.
It has a slightly better EV with diamonds, but it's calling with two pair.
Right, so what is his donk jamming range actually look like?
But if you see here, there's a sliver of folding.
Yep, so it's. It's not like a slam dunk situation. We're, we're finding ourselves in.
It's a four liner, right? So.
Well, what's it, what is he supposed to be doing?
Yeah, I think that was also the other interesting question.
What is his shove range on the river?
His shove ranges should be flushes and the ace of diamonds probably.
Well, how about, what does he do with, what does he do with ten X?
Tens check.
So he does donk jam some ten X here, it looks like.
Now, the, the ten X is bet smaller.
He doesn't have a ton of jamming, it looks like. Um. Yeah, the ten X is betting into the sub kind of fifteen. It's effectively a jam, right?
Louis, go back to, what is the ace eight?
Can you slide it over so we can see the aces, the offsuit aces?
Oh, it's a flush.
They're out of. They're out of, they're out of view.
Yeah, the ace seven of the world, ace seven offsuit. It's just not a thing, right?
Is he supposed to check raise out on the flop? I'm curious. Like, I think he's probably check raising most of them on the flop, I'm guessing.
Maybe, maybe. I'm not sure.
Now, I think the kicker's too low to check raise on the flop.
Poker tracker. Alright, we got field of view issues. There we go. Nice. Raise. This is very capped. Don't know what this guy's calling with from eighteen big blinds, but he does. I like betting very small.
I like, no. Oh, is it the small blind?
Yeah, yeah, he's small blind. He called with eighteen big blinds.
Okay, yeah, it's a bit small.
Uh, I like keeping him on the hook. This is even a little bigger than I would have bet, but I think it's fine.
As we unblock the king and the queen, I can go for the bigger bet here.
Reasonable, very reasonable.
It just, it just has a. I think the um going smaller though just sets a bit, a more I will, like, like a better shove on the river.
The only reason I would go smaller here is because he is so capped at this point, like he shouldn't have suited broadways here, shouldn't have jack tens really. Like all that stuff should be jamming pre or folding. Um, so I mean, this is like a weak, weak king X, maybe some kind of like eight X or something.
This is ten nine, it's a.
But you're blocking eights. Ten nine makes some sense.
Yeah, I was surprised when I took big bet sizing on the turn with what he shows up here with.
I think play this time.
Okay, I am curious what he shows up with.
Yeah, Ken had it, ten nine. He turned the double belly.
Just a fish.
Paid a sixty-six percent bet with.
Yeah, this, this guy's a fish.
Yeah, mark him as a calling station.
Yeah, like honestly, pre flop, it's an atrocious call. The flop, you could justify it. The turn is way out of line. Like he, he made some mistakes.
Yeah.
Alright.
You open jam fifty big blinds with a king.
It's twenty big blind effective. It falls to me from a small blind, king five off.
Is there any other pertinent information?
The team you said?
Uh, it's getting ICMish.
Twenty's uh too much, I think.
It's too much. It has too much. You only really do this with like deuces and a couple ace rags.
Yeah, maybe like if there was like some ICMish stuff going on, you could maybe justify it, but um I think like if this was ace five, it would be okay. I just.
So what do you guys do with king five and king six?
I raise. I just raise.
I just raise.
Uh, king five is the bottom of my limp call range, I think.
The offsuit trash, I'm just, these high-low combos, I, I exclusively.
They might be, they might be limbs.
So this is, what are we looking at, twenty? So I'm coming in jams.
Axis, it mixes.
It's not bad.
Okay, okay, but it's not, it's not, I'm doing this full frequency, so it's not good, right?
And you're closer to like twenty-two, so that you might get edged out at twenty-two.
Yeah, the, the real question is, are you finding this with queen six or?
Well, it just, it, it centralizes the, the behavior to like one combo here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the king five is the governor.
And we lose, we lose all the ace X.
Feels bad, but it's a bit of a thing.
Yep, yeah, yeah. I don't think it's like a big, big blender by any means. Uh, you bet. You get flat by jans, okay?
Oh, oh, I, I save this one because, just because I played with jans, I rant.
Yeah, ten K, ten K reg, this guy is uh.
You guys know this guy?
He knows the game very well.
You don't know jans, I rant?
I don't play on that GG.
He's a, he's a high stakes Euro reg. He's probably, I think he's like rated top, yeah, top ten in the world right now. Um, you check, we bet. We get a call. Um, big bet. That's of note.
Do you think it's a big bet on the flop from out of position with an ace?
I don't think you do a ton of big betting out of position, especially with a hand like this. You picked a reasonable board to find a, a bet, I think. Like this uh ten eight, three, two tones.
Three betting ten X suited, right?
Yeah, I would prefer it to be rainbow if you go larger sizing also. What are, what are?
Okay.
Ken, you have you had coffee this morning? Okay, I think uh, I think the two-tone nature is gonna drive down the sizing of that, but.
Actually, this might be a check.
And with this diamond, ace of diamond, it probably, it probably does wanna bet, which is a single diamond. We bet quite a bit out of position. Uh, he's not button, right?
We lost it. No, he's like cut off or hijacked.
Yeah, so we get a decent bet free, uh c bet frequency, actually.
Come on.
Oh my goodness, it's multi-way.
Uh, just, just ignore the last guy and let's just play it like it's heads up so we can see, because that's prob, I, I like to bet a lot less if it's multi-way, by the way, but.
Also, I'm not betting.
Honestly, it's a big blind range. You can kind of discount this range a little bit.
Although in the new advanced masterclass, they'd say there's spots where you actually c bet more multi-way with certain combos than you would heads up.
Well, it's not a big bet. So this being multi-way is definitely not a big bet.
Yeah, if you make it rainbow, you might have some larger bets, but I think the fact that it is um two-tone.
I personally think I'd prefer checking there.
I do prefer checking here, but it's fine.
On the flop, yeah.
It's not, it's not a mistake by any means.
No, no, not at all.
Um, what happened on the turn? I don't even know what happened on the turn. Check, check, check. I think check, check is good, especially since he called a big bet.
Man, it's a nice on the river.
You know, I think this is great. I, I like this bet. I think I like uh a big bet here because.
Hot and half? Never.
He's gonna have some, he's gonna have some value that continues here and bluff catches.
See, if, if it would have like this size, like bit closer to pot, maybe dollens would be less used and this would be more. But okay, big bet, it's fine.
Nine and twelve. An okay hand. He probably just had like uh diamonds or something that he was calling you with.
Big bet. Got away with it, yeah.
Maybe a, maybe a jack nine or something.
Yeah.
Alright, what is, oh, this is Pete's hand.
Uh.
What is this one?
Oh, I reviewed it already. I, I, I went with the silly. So I raise pre flop, button calls, we get this board. On the board, I bet one big blind because it's mono tone. He called, he raised me to three X, I call.
Shenanigans.
Uh, no, this is okay.
You have the Sims in your um DM.
Hey, by the way, this is, you're betting out of position. Like you, you just don't bet out of position.
Uh, it's good, actually. I was surprised. I, I was actually surprised, Galen, by ran it in bio form with the bet sizes and it's good.
With the bet sizes, got it. Well, I guess it is.
You raised and there's a king on the flop. The king makes you wanna bet because he's capped on his king range.
Yeah, maybe so. The, I did some aggregated report work on this not too terribly long ago. And it's just like the overwhelming heuristic is on monotone boards. It just like nukes your, your c betting out of position range.
I think it was like eighty percent one big blind. I forget. He's got the Sims if you wants to pull him up.
Oh, here's the flop strategy. So there's a little bit of one big betting with a bit of everything.
Hey, will you do me a, would, would you do a favor and compare this to the GTO wizard output?
So you say I gave him multiple bet sizes so it could, you had good choices. I gave him uh one big blind and then twenty-three percent, seventy.
It's, it's still mostly checking, even though it's betting some of every combination, it's still mostly a check.
That's the beauty of the one big blind bet.
Yeah, yeah, you get to distribute your bets out of that board, right?
And then I thought it would polarize turns and it didn't, I don't think. If I remember, it didn't.
Polarizing turns after you get check raised on a monotone board seems crazy.
Oh, we got check raised.
It, it's not check raised. It's raised in position. The guy flatted behind him.
Right, okay, that's, that's fair. You're right, Pete. So what is this, like low jack or something?
Another gun, one versus button.
I gotta look at low jack.
The flop is king ten. Loose.
Or.
Okay, this looks very similar to the solution that you have here. So that's, that's like passes the smell test, right? So it's good.
Galen doesn't trust my Sims.
Trust, but verify.
Can you uh slide over so we can see the percentage of the bets and checks in bio? We couldn't see the full screen.
In bio, this is a screenshot.
Yeah, hit the scroll, the slider on the bottom.
You ought to, I have no idea what hand we're talking about here, David.
So we have, sorry, you don't have it all. How often is it check?
Ah, sixty-five percent.
We can't see. Okay, there it is. So uh do we have a, we have a bit of a smaller bet, right? Than GTO wizard, so that makes sense.
Yep, and I'm, I'm cross comparing with Odin and they only have thirty-three percent out of position, which drives down the betting frequency even further. So it's like you know, you're checking eighty-two percent of the time to cross reference that. So yeah, that's the power of driving your bet sizing down.
So on the flop, he raises me. This is the solution against the race?
Yeah, you gotta call, like, it's just, yeah, it's definitely a no-brainer at that point.
Yeah. Okay, and then on the turn, ten comes.
Yeah, this is, this is your old ways, Louis, and.
Eh, I regret.
God, I, I think if you get raised on the flop.
Still a thing on the turn.
So this is a, this is a dunk.
Yeah.
One big blind dunk.
I, I think, but I think check, I need to like shove river.
Checking has more value because it allows him to barrel.
This, this is the silly part is the, the river bet.
The turn and the river are pretty silly, I think. Like you, you let this guy off the hook, I think, where he's just like, I wanna see what kind of shenanigans this guy's up to. I'll, I'll pay a big blind for that.
Yeah, look at this on the river. All the cookies, just shove it.
Or checking, yeah.
Check or shove.
Yeah, but value hat. This is the time for Louis to get out of line and five X the pot.
And he doesn't do it.
And I don't do it. I missed it.
And here you are, in front of all of the regs, not sure if is, I'm Siberian, all these guys. You're on stream, Lorham's got you on stream, doing these shenanigans.
Yeah, one big blind.
So you won eight big blinds with poor kind.
Yeah, not very good, right? But if you look at the hand he calls me with on the river, um, I don't know.
I think he played it well. Like, I mean, if he has a, a hand to kind of like raise these shenanigans on the flop, he's got a pretty good combo. That's not just like value.
Yeah.
And then he's like got zero reason to ever raise you on the turn. And then he has to basically never be right to call the river and ace is gonna do that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, he has to be right about six percent of the time.
Right, which, which ace is gonna, an ace is gonna do that.
So I butchered the river.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's whatever. It's the old exploit.
Alright. Well, thanks a lot for watching, everybody.